Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 2nd, 2020, meeting of the Coacid School Committee. As with most of our recent meetings pursuant to Governor Baker's declaration of a state of emergency in this Commonwealth, our otherwise public meetings are being held virtually. We are being broadcasted live on both Facebook and Cohasset 143 TV. At this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order by taking a roll call of the school committee members that are present. Please indicate your presence by saying "present" after I call your name in alphabetical order. Mrs. Colery.
All right.
All right, I'll take that as a present. Ms. Colery is absent tonight. Mrs. Mar?
Present.
Mrs. St. Andre?
Present.
And present Craig McClewen. Okay, before I get into public comments, gonna make those initial remarks that I typically make at the beginning of the meetings. If you have a pointed discussion that is related to a regularly scheduled agenda item, please reserve your comments until that time. Otherwise, public comment is the opportunity to raise any points that are not otherwise scheduled for or related to issues that are already on the agenda. With that said, I will say, if you're making any comment whatsoever, please, just as you would if you were in person, state your full name, including your address, along with your comment. Thank you so much. So, public comment, let me just see if anyone, I'll give people a few seconds here to make a public comment if they should so choose. Okay, I'm not seeing any at this time, so we'll move on to the next, oh, wait a minute, hold on, someone just came in. Someone's, I think, they said they'd like to ask something, so hold on a second. I think they're just trying to buy themselves some time, so let's just give them a second to formulate their question.
While that person is typing, is 143 TV supposed to be a panelist on here?
143 is supposed to be a panelist.
I just don't see them, I just...
I do not either. I don't know. I can text them again, see if I can get them on there.
Thank you for pointing that out, Ms. St. Andre. I missed that, so thank you. Looks like this individual's having technical difficulties. So, Mr. Wellman, I can read your message, we're not gonna be able to hear you. You just type in your question into the Q&amp;A feature, and I will read aloud. Type your address as well, please. And we will read the question aloud, or your issue, or your comment. And Dr. Sullivan, or whoever it relates to, will do their best to answer your inquiry. Just wanna give this person a little bit extra time. I know it's probably pretty difficult if you're sort of a first-timer, trying to figure out how to do this.
Yeah, no, definitely. Mr. Wellman, are you trying to type in the answer, or are you usually trying to speak? It's probably easier if you type in the answer.
Yeah, I think he was trying to speak it, which obviously, we're not gonna be able to hear. So, I told him that he should type it, so maybe that's what he's doing now.
Okay.
He has typed two different comments here.
Yeah, so he's got the ability to.
Right.
Might be, oh, another question came in.
Okay, so this is from Ms. Christina Bailey. I do not have an address related to this comment, but she states, "I have an incoming kindergartner student, and I'm wondering if you will still be charging for full-time kindergarten, given the hybrid model. Thank you for all that you're doing." So, thank you so much for your comment, Mrs. Bailey. I would say this is related to the reentry item, so if any of you have comments related to the reentry agenda item, please wait. I mean, we're gonna answer this now, just because she just typed it in, but I would ask everyone to wait for the appropriate time. And then, Mr. Wellman followed up another comment after. So, Dr. Sullivan, could you provide a quick answer to that by any chance?
Yes, I can, Ms. Bailey. You know, we do realize that it's a different time and day and age than, you know, we've had in the past with this, but we are providing our services remotely, as well as in person, in the K model. So, right now, we are, you know, it's something we could explore if the Budget and Finance Committee decided we would, but at this point, it is a full charge for the kindergarten. And I do know where you're coming from with your question now.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Sullivan. No problem, Mrs. Bailey, don't even have to apologize. I'm just, whatever, you just had the unfortunate circumstance of being the only one that just made a comment. So, no problem at all.
Nope, not at all.
That's right. Let me just finish off my, I'm just answering Mr. Wellman privately. He says he's gonna email it another time, so...
Okay. Mr. Wellman, if it's clearly, if it's a question, you know, you can clearly email me, or Dr. Scollins, or both of us, and we'll make sure we get right back to you, Mr. Wellman. I'm sorry about the difficulty here.
Okay. So, I did actually share my email and your email with him in a written message. So, we're gonna move on from public comment to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. So, at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Patrick Sullivan, our superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Craig, and thank you, everyone, again, for being here, for your continued work in getting us ready for the start of the school year. Today was an excellent day. You know, it will only be better with kids in the building, but it was, have to be honest, a little anxious getting into this, coming into school this morning, thinking how my virtual opening was gonna go. Dr. Scollins and I did a virtual opening today, because we found it was the best format for today, for this morning. It went extremely well, and I loved the fact there were a lot of teachers in the building, just walking through the buildings, being able to meet with them, having meetings throughout the day. It just, it had a sense of normalcy, and I think, you know, really, from a visceral standpoint, you know, I just, it just felt like a load off. It felt great, just getting back into a routine that had a semblance of the routine that I, you know, I guess I loved so much. Maybe I didn't realize how much I appreciated it, but just being around teachers, and I saw a couple of, I had a couple of face-to-face meetings, you know, with masks today, but with teachers, and more than was happening. It just was, it was great, and I think it's just coming attractions for, you know, what it's gonna feel like with our students, and how our students are gonna feel, too. That teacher-student connection, I always say, is the most important connection in the whole building. It drives everything, and that is a real treat that will be upcoming when we are able to welcome our students back. So, as I mentioned, today was our opening day. We had a virtual opening, and our staff also participated in some math professional development at the elementary level, Dr. Golden, Pam Fahy, and Mary Goodwin. I spoke to our middle and high school staff, and Dr. Scollins is gonna go into that more deeply in the update in just a moment. We did have some HVAC, HVAC testing done through an outside company today. I'm told things went very well. We'll be waiting their report within the next several days, and that will help drive us forward as we ensure that, you know, what our facilities have told us, and we trust in them, and they're amazing and have done great work, but that, you know, even from an outside perspective, that we're not missing anything that could provide as much safety as possible for our students and for our staff. And they're really looking at HVAC, and also airflow, and the ability to move air in and out of places. So, all that's very important, obviously, at this point, and it was nice to see the initial report. Report is that things are looking good, and I look forward to the specifics of that. We are, we did last, was it, was it last week? It was this week, it seems like two weeks and one. On Monday, we had our buildings filmed, as I had mentioned would happen. We have some student filmmakers who are amazing, and went through and filmed our middle school, our two elementary schools, and they had already done the high school, or finishing on it. It's a film that is sort of under construction, in that we're gonna get it out, if not the, not this week, maybe the very beginning of next week, hopefully, maybe this week, but because of the holiday, probably next week. And it will have what our rooms look like, and what our common spaces look like, and some of the routines and protocols the kids are gonna be following. But there's a lot to come that we're gonna be putting into the next couple of weeks. We have some wonderful signage that is Cohasset-specific. It's Cohasset emblems, the wheel, and various markings for directionals to show people how to walk, not how to walk, but where to walk appropriately, and to move, and when to wait, and all of that. It's gonna look wonderful in our buildings. That has yet to be set up, so we will add to the film when we get that. Also, our tents, we have our tents procured and ready to go. We just haven't put them up yet. We're doing that a little later in this process because of weather, and we wanna just make sure that, you know, we're in a good spot to have them installed, and whether is, we know it's a good day to get those up, but those will be coming up within the next week. They won't be on the film. And we are working really to operationalize all our protocols, and we're gonna be providing training over the next couple of weeks for all of our staff on the protocols. Today was kind of an overview of what those protocols will look like, and we've been working hard with our nurses to make sure those COVID-19 protocols that came from the state are all operationalized, and put into place and articulated, our PPE, our personal protective equipment. PPE has become part of our vocabulary. Wouldn't have known what that meant a few months ago, but now we're living in it, and we have a good amount of it, not only ordered, but ready, and ready to go. We're in one of the better positions around us, as I look at the size of our school and the amount of PPE we actually have, and that's because of the great efforts of our town. But right now, our principals are in the process of getting that material into their buildings to be ready for our staff and students as we need it. All of our spaces are really being readied and prepared. Our medical reading rooms are created and almost ready at this point. Our rooms are ready, our teachers are in there, creating the spaces to feel like a home. Either way, we created them by the structure of what the plan is, and they're sticking with that plan, but they're making them their own, and putting their own authentic span, and our, you know, billboard, billboards, our bulletin boards are going up, and they're being decorated, and it has that feeling of, you know, there's love in the air here for our kids. We're ready to get them back and show them how much we care about them, and you can see that in our messaging throughout the building. So, really, really nice today to see that all happening. Our bus routes, I did promise to be up in a few days, and they are, they are going to be up this week. That's our, we have them done, and that's great. And letters will be going out with the routes in the letters, if they haven't already. Let's see, a couple of bigger issues before I turn it over to Barbara Sawalka for just a quick update on special education, and then move to Dr. Scollins for a more deep update on professional development and TECA. She'll talk a little bit about TECA. A couple of matters that I wanted to discuss with the committee for your consideration and potential vote, if you decide upon it. The first is about the, if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, I sent out a survey to all families asking for information about those folks who were teachers and had students going to Cohasset Public Schools. And that could have been, you know, someone lives in Cohasset and has their sons and daughters, or go to Cohasset schools, but they teach in Noelwell, and I wanted to find, oh, they teach in Bridgewater. And then, there, of course, were our teachers that teach in Cohasset that also live in Cohasset and have kids, and therefore, their kids go to Cohasset. And then, we do allow contractually, if they've indicated by a certain date, our staff who may live in other communities but teaching Cohasset to bring their students in. So, it was really looking at all three categories to determine who might have an interest in having their children in for at least four days a week, and that's really what we'd be able to afford if we were able to do that. But I mentioned last meeting that the numbers were too high. You know, we were at, they ended up moving down a little bit, it ended up being about 69, I believe it was, folks. We didn't believe we could do it safely with all the considerations we had to put into play. But I did want to pass forward the thought, as an employer, you know, my job is to try to do what I can for my staff, and to stand and do the best, put them in the best position to succeed, and to ensure that they come back and are ready to be the best they can be. So, what I'm looking at now is, and I wondered if you'd wanna have any discussion about it, would be the possibility of just having staff who have kids in Cohasset. What that would mean, that people who live in Cohasset, who are staff and have kids in Cohasset, and people who have already determined that their kids go to Cohasset, have that opportunity. So, I wanted to put that for your thoughts. That number is significantly lower. It's at a max 26, and that's spread out across the different schools. And what that would mean is, we would have to use our grant money to hire four activity aids. One at each school would be in the room, but the numbers are so much more tenable, if you think about, you know, two, or three, or maybe four kids in the room. Anyway, I felt I would be remiss if I didn't bring that up as a thought for you to, and I thought I'd be maybe letting my staff down by not at least voicing that as a possibility, and to see what your thoughts were regarding that. So, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about it now, Craig, or you want me to continue with my report, and then we go back to it?
Why don't you just continue through the, through all topics you have related to the update on the reentry plan, and once we've gotten through that, we'll have some, we have some discussion on that particular bulleted point, because there's, so Mr. Wellman was able to articulate his question, and I think it arguably relates to reentry, so that's another issue I'll raise at that point. So, could you just sort of finish this section of your report, Dr. Sullivan?
Well, I'll finish this section, and I'll let Barbara update, and then maybe we can talk, because I think the professional development update is a bit different, if that's okay?
Right, I mean, yeah, so I'm talking about just all issues related to the update on the reentry roadmap.
You got it. So, and the numbers, just so everyone knows what they'd be, is three, if we did this with just our staff who have students in Cohasset, I wanna be clear, they'd have to have a student in Cohasset, not in another place. We have three kindergartners, two first graders, two second graders, one third grader, two fourth graders, three fifth graders, two sixth graders, one seventh grader, six ninth graders, two 10th graders, and two 12th graders, just so people had a sense what we're dealing with. And the other matter is about masks. You know, I know we have a policy in masks, and I know policy is absolutely the school committee's purview. I don't wanna step in on those toes at all, I respect that. I just wondered if we might wanna have some deeper conversation about the type of mask that we're permitting students and staff to wear in our buildings, particularly students in regard to the policy. There's been a lot of research, well, some research, anyway, done about gaiters, and the, first of all, there's quite a high level of variability amongst the gaiter, amongst masks in general, but the gaiter in particular. Some of it can be very thin, and it may not provide the protection that is needed for other folks in our buildings, and that the mask be as much as we can control, you know, a thick mask that if you held it up to the, if it's a cloth mask, and you hold it up to the light, you can't see through the mask. And I just would, I just wondered if we wanna have some conversation about the type of mask we're allowing people to wear in our buildings, and if that was something you wanted to bring up, because that is something that's been brought to my attention many, several times, as people are digesting the roadmap. And I wanna say to people out there, thank you for your input. If you can't tell, I'm quite a perfectionist, and I do like to send out corrections, but I do appreciate your patience on that, of just trying to get it right. The version on the website right now is a pretty clean version, like it has all inconsistencies out of it. So, I would really, really direct you towards that, if you really wanted to see where we stand right now, and it's not a drastic change from what I sent folks, it's just there was inconsistency issues throughout. So, those are the main things that I wanted to update on, and I just wanna let Barbara have a moment to update a little bit about the work going on with Student Services. Barbara?
Thanks, everybody, and good evening. So, it's very exciting, actually, to be here at this time. A lot of people are saying to me, you know, "Oh, my goodness, what a time to join," but, you know, everybody's doing it the same way. And today, particularly with, you know, staff coming back into the building, being able to, you know, meet them virtually, and meet them in small groups, and do some work, and I've met some of them, you know, live before in a socially-distanced way, I'm doing the same thing tomorrow. It's just really nice, and Dr. Sullivan is absolutely right, there's just a great energy, there's a lot of excitement. There's just a lot of positivity among the staff in terms of being back and being able to welcome children again, so it's really exciting. In Student Services, you know, we're really, I had a CPAC meeting this afternoon. We're really kind of moving along with the way we're providing services. I've been able to push out to families in a general way, you know, how services are going to look. The staff is all very on board with, you know, the way we're able to approach services, both between a live and a remote model, and really, the work of these next couple of weeks, if you will, these 10 days that we have, which I'm so grateful that we have them to work together, because we're really, I really, along with my team chairs, are going to be very much, you know, kind of right in the weeds with the staff, and working on what those individual schedules and services are going to look like, so we can really provide the best possible special education servicing and specialized instruction that we can to children in the modes and models that will best fit them. And I was saying at CPAC today, that, you know, before we actually bring children into the building, you know, our parents are going to have a very clear schedule of the services their children are going to be receiving, and how they're going to receive them, and what they're going to look like, and we're very committed to that. All of the parents are aware of the children who are coming, you know, in the two-day-a-week model, live with the three-days-remote, and the children who are coming in the four-day-a-week model, due to the regulations that Desi set out for us, along with the health and safety concerns, and the best interest of all students. I've engaged with a lot of parents, everyone's been very understanding, very cooperative. I've talked a lot about, you know, how students come in, and for all students, you know, this spring, we don't really know the skill set with which they're coming in, and we're really going to be looking at that. As Dr. Sullivan has said before, we're gonna look over six weeks what this model looks like, but also how students progress, and that that will help kind of formulate our next steps. And it's been a very collaborative, cooperative, communicative experience so far, and I've been very grateful for it, and to be able to get to know Cohasset staff and families in this way, because it's gone very nicely.
Yeah, thank you, Barbara, and I also wanna, I wanna compliment the school committee on your choice of having the October 28th date as really a dipstick and a touch base. I think that's been very, very accepted by our teachers, and I think that we're definitely, you know, looking at that as a moment when we're gonna make some decisions and really reflect on what we've been doing, and I think that's great. I think that, so I just wanted you to know that was very well taken. Well, that's great, so that's it for my update on that end, and then, of course, the professional development that Dr. Scollins will update, and later, Susan Nolan will update on our finance.
Right, so, and I know that we have Mr. Otundi as well to provide an...
Correct.
For now, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to address a couple of the questions, and then I'd like to address those points that you sort of posed to us, Dr. Sullivan, relating to the children of Cohasset teachers, and the issues related to the types, the specific types of masks. I'd like to open that up to the school committee. So, moving first to Mr. Wellman's point that, who had tried to make this during the public comment section of the meeting. This is a question, I think, for Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Scollins. He says, "I am speaking on behalf of a number of parents who would ask Cohasset Middle School, or Cohasset High School, to host an additional SAT on September 26th, October 4th, or October 14th. I spoke to the College Board, and the deadlines have not been missed. It's very important to our seniors. I would like the opportunity to be heard tonight, as time is tight, and the principal sounds resistant."
Yeah, I mean, I do, I don't wanna get into, you know, private conversations between, you know, folks happening. All I can say is that, you know, there's some question about the ordering of materials and our ability to do so, and I'd have to really circle back with Principal Scott to get a more articulated answer for Mr. Wellman, or for anyone who really has a question regarding that. I will look into that, and I am included on some emails between some parents, so I'll make sure that, if Mr. Wellman wants to make sure that I'm CC'd on anything, or included in an email, I'll get right back to him. I really couldn't speak for Principal Scott in that matter. I do know that there's some reasons that he's articulating that it may be difficult to host an SAT at Cohasset High School at this time, but I wanna get into why that is a little bit. I'm not really prepared to say why without talking to Principal Scott.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, and Mr. Wellman, and this goes for anyone. You're always welcome to reach out to any member of the leadership, the district's leadership team, to sort of follow up on any of these conversations or thoughts as things develop. And it sounds like, Dr. Sullivan, you may have, you know, some more information after you continue discussions with Principal Scott, perhaps?
Yes, yeah, I mean, his initial response was that it wasn't something that we could do, but I, you know, I haven't studied the answer very thoroughly, just because today, this is very new, it was today, and obviously, today was a busy day, so I have it in front of me, I just wanna look back at it before I make any comment, and maybe it might need some conversation with Principal Scott, just so I get a sense for why it's not a, why he's not advocating for it right now. And I believe that parents are emailing him, and I think that's a good dialogue, and I just don't think that dialogue has settled yet.
Okay, thank you very much. To pull the record, I forgot to note that Mr. Wellman's address is 53 Highland Ave, just for the purpose of the minutes. Next, there's one more question from Ms. Jessica DiLorenzo, 132 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. She states, "While you haven't voted on this yet, I did wanna share my concern. I am all for supporting Cohasset teachers, as we know they are the heart of our schools, but I would express concern that there is the possibility of adding ESPs to support students in a four-day model for teachers' children, but at the last meeting, you discussed not being able to hire additional staff, such as ESPs, to support home learning days. I continue to be concerned about the home learning days for high school students. Along that note, is there an update on what the home learning days will look like at the high school level? Live instruction, question mark, breakdown of synchronous slash asynchronous learning?"
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it is numbers, you know, to be able to hire four ESPs to help, not even ESPs, activity aids, really, to run the rooms where the students will be working on their remote assignments, is a lot less intensive than hiring the many tutors that would be really needed to make a dent in helping individual students at all the levels. So, it really, it kind of is a numbers game in that way, you know. The other, the question's gone, but I'm just thinking, the other question there, Craig, I'm...
Oh, it related to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I answered that too quickly for you, so it's not...
Well, I can go back and look, it's an answer question.
It's what's that? It's about the, what the learning's gonna look like for high school students, which I think we got into in a fair amount of depth last time, but I don't know how you...
Yeah, and that's still what we're moving for, we're moving for some synchronous instruction delivery. We're working very diligently in providing professional development for our staff on how to create a mixture of asynchronous and synchronous learning on the remote platform, and I think Dr. Scollins probably talked a little bit about that when she talks about the work that Ed Tech will be doing. the work that EdTech will be doing with our staff. But I do still believe that we will, we're we're going to be in a mode where we have the, an appropriate level of synchronous connectivity between what's happening at home and what's happening in a live class. And that we'll be able to forge forward with that. That is my, that is my hope, and that's where we are right now in our discussions, so.
Okay. It seems to be a fluid situation. It's developing. I mean, we just passed the reentry, the final version of the reentry plan last week. The faculty members have just returned to work today. It was the first day of work for them. And there's a lot of professional development ahead of them. So I think that, you know, there's nothing, I don't think definitive we have to roll out to everyone or else we would do that right now. It's something that it seems to be a developing process. And and that will be obviously well developed by the time the students are expected to return to school. Is that is that accurate, Dr. Sullivan?
I think it's accurate. And it's also, you know, we're, we're working through all the pieces of it, you know, the privacy piece, the instructional piece, the, you know, the management piece. And we're really working through all of those to create what is a hopefully going to be a really healthy, and I believe it will be, model for students who are in the remote to be able to connect with those students and the the teacher who is teaching live. So I think we're we're on our way to to creating that. And I have great faith in our staff and leaders to collaborate to do so. So I think I think it's moving okay in that regard.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. So I just want to open it up to, Dr. Sullivan opposed two separate issues to the school committee. I want to open it up for deliberation on these issues. First is the issue surrounding four day in person learning for the children of Cohasset teachers and what the school committee's feelings are on that. If you could share, you know, your thoughts in in alphabetical order, Ms. Cleary.
Could I clarify one thing before Ashley speaks, just so I can make sure? So when I say that, I just want to be clear that it's, when I looked at the numbers here, it would, the proposal would have to be a staff member who either lives in Cohasset as their kids go to school or has already by via our timelines and our contract, brought their kids into the district. It isn't, it isn't thinking about staff members who are teaching in the district, who may live in another place but have their kids go there. I'm not considering the thought of them bringing their kids in at this point because those numbers would definitely skew and move. So I just wanted to be clear on that so everyone knows what what I was proposing. And I really apologize for for breaking that up. I just thought it might, it might get into our conversation a little deeper, so I'm.
I think it's important clarification. I mean, I I understood it just because I've been so involved in this, but I think that was important to clarify at the outset here. Ms. Cleary, do you have any thoughts?
My thought is that it was very clear that the community really wanted our teachers to come back into the building, understandably. And I believe that if there is a way that we can safely accommodate that, I would be in support of that. I would I would like Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins and the leadership team to tell us what they believe to be the safest way to do that. But I would be in support of that.
I can, should I respond to that, Craig, or you want to go through the?
Oh, please, yes, please.
And Dr. Scollins, please jump in to add to this. And Barbara and Sue and Steve, if you have something to talk about as well. But I would say, right now, we're looking at a a separate room. And we actually do have rooms because we were looking at this when we were looking at the larger, larger idea, where could we put these folks? And essentially, it would be a room where the students would work on their non hybrid, their non cohort days where they're in in session on their remote assignments supervised within the school building. They'd be able to be eligible for lunch, you know, they'd be able to get lunch and, you know, take breaks and all that. But it would be, it would be an opportunity for them to have, remember now, they're going to be, depending on the level they're in, they're going to be doing some sort of a live stream, right? With whether it's in the elementary with their specials and doing their asynchronous work. That's going to be at a very high quality, I believe, as we move forward further with EdTech. So you're going to see some, a lot of taped asynchronous work. Where you have, you know, a a teacher leading a lesson through, so that following along, the student will be following along an asynchronous prepared lesson. But all of that would be supervised in these rooms. And it would be based on their cohort. So obviously, you know, we wouldn't be mixing the cohorts. We wouldn't be putting them in the rooms with the other cohorts. Not only would that be very difficult to do for space, space reasons in many of the classes, but it would be not the best thing to do in terms of mixing the cohorts within our buildings. And that's what we're trying to do is to to keep some separation there. So that would be, that would be the plan. It would be in a place where they could access technology. And of course, at the middle and high school, they'd be bringing their own device so they could have a good internet connection. They'd have the ability to, you know, to be in in the school environment for a longer period. And it would, I believe, help with the the staff from a peace of mind standpoint and also, you know, from a, you know, their kids are there next to them standpoint.
I think I really want to emphasize is that we created a model of, by that meaning the hybrid model that's in the reentry roadmap, that we believe to be the safest scenario for our students and teachers. And I have had a lot of respect for the process that you all followed to create that. And I think that you've been very deliberate and I'm really grateful for it. And I I guess what I mean is I can understand why some people might question why if we can have children of staff in the building for four days, why we can't have all of our kids in the building for four days. But I feel like it's important to emphasize that the reason is safety and our priority is safety. And I, and I think that that is why the 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 number of students is very, is a, is a key part of this equation. And I would love to be able to offer this to to all of the students in Cohasset. But I think logistically, that's not possible right now. And so I just, I want to support your position that a lower number is a safer number. And I feel like, so anyway, that's, that's my position on it.
Thank you.
I thank you, Ms. Cleary. Mrs. Mar.
Thank you. If I cut out, I apologize. I'm having sporadic internet outages. My, I support anything that helps our staff come back, feel safe, feel secure and feel supported. I would just, we pretty much allocated the grant money at our last facility meeting. So I'd have to look at the numbers with you, Dr. Sullivan, to see, you know, because you had indicated it would come out of the grant money and to to see what changes we might need to make based on that, that strategy we had last week.
Yeah, and actually, I I don't want to misspeak. Is that correct, Sue, that it would come out of the grant money?
We could look at the grant, like Ellen said, and write an amendment if that's what we needed to do.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think when we first looked at it, we thought there may be some, a little bit of wiggle room there because I don't think it's a, based on their role. And it's, it's not really a teaching role. They would potentially be a little, you know, I hate to value like this, but a little lesser. It won't be quite as expensive as maybe, you know, it we, one may think at first look, so.
And and just one more follow up question, if I may, then. So the essentially would be for two days. So these would be part time employees for a school day, so they wouldn't be full time.
No, they'd be there for four days. Well, they'd have to be because they'd have one cohort on A and B, on Monday, Tuesday, and the other cohort on Thursday, Friday. So more than likely, they would be four days.
Four days, okay. Okay, I would, yeah, we would have to look, even with the grant written the way it was written, I don't, you know, do we have room in it? I guess that's my quest, my question.
Yeah, well, Sue's gonna later is going to talk a little bit about the grant. So that might give us a little, a little bit of a thought on that.
Okay, and then when we go back to school full time, knock on wood, then these activity aids would no longer be needed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
There'd be hourly activity aids, which we have. You know, we have some activity aids who are 11 to 2, for instance, at the elementary. So that, that's what they, that's the way we'd look at them.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mrs. Mar, you all set?
Yeah, you're, her internet, I think, froze a little bit, but she's also.
So I'll move on. I I think she's finished. Ms. St. Onge, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, and I can't help but look at this from the perspective of a parent who filled out that survey and does not work in Cohasset, of course. And so I completely agree with everyone on wanting to maintain the safety and low numbers at school. But I also am just curious because we are looking at seven kids at Osgood total, six at Deer Hill, three in the middle school, 10 in the high school. I guess I'm just curious how they fall out in cohorts. So like, how many kids would be supported on each day? And if there would be any possibility with like the square footage of the room and the space, if we could draw from the surveyed families and like fill some lottery spots? And if that's absurd, fine. I just think like those aren't total numbers who would be there on each day. And we did have 69 kids interested, so I'm just curious.
I, the the word absurd is not in my vocabulary anymore because we're really trying to redefine everything. So everything is, you know, a thought. I actually haven't done that, and I probably should. You know, the numbers were so low that I I didn't think to break it up. But, you know, with that thought in mind, I could do that fairly quickly. And maybe even during Dr. Scollins's professional development report, I could kind of count it up quickly and get a sense for that. But I, I don't know, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure how they'd fall in terms of cohorts. It just would take me, you know, probably 10 minutes to do.
Yeah, I'm just curious, just having been back at school myself. I completely understand and appreciate, you know, you have a a room that is a certain size and can safely accommodate a set, a fixed number of people. But if we're hiring, if this goes through and we're hiring someone and we can accommodate four kids in a room at a time, might we be able to do a random lottery and include some of the kids who signed up or expressed interest? That's all.
And the other considerations are lunch, you know, and our spots at lunch. And, you know, but it's, it's, yeah, I mean, the the big number, I, we, we were confident we could not do.
Yeah.
Somewhere in between, yeah, we might be able to get more kids in if that is a thought of the the committee. I just would have to really look at that a little, little deep, more, a little more deeply, that's all.
Yeah, I just, obviously, this is only my own thought. I just think if we're looking at hiring staff, we might as well maximize that investment in the safest way possible.
You know, that's usually my, that's my, one of my mottos is try to maximize our staff and safely as possible. So that makes sense.
Yeah, that, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess my, my, the only one initial thought I had on this, or one initial question anyway, was you mentioned there were 10 for the high school in total. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I'm wondering, you know, for me, the compelling interest in in doing this would be to assist teachers with childcare concerns, to further facilitate attendance of teachers at school so that we can successfully roll out the hybrid model. My question, though, where a student is in high school, whether or not the same childcare concerns are exist, you know, as opposed to say, if you're a, you know, you have a, you're a teacher with a third grade student that obviously wouldn't be able to be left at home while you're teaching. I feel like a student that's 14 to 18 years of age, while, you know, understanding or acknowledging the, the equity element, I I feel like that is something to be taken into consideration. And I understand the the equity argument in terms of, you know, everyone's students and not only other teachers, but, you know, this, this children of all districts' families, you know, being allowed to attend four days. Everyone wants that. If we're only allowing it for some, you know, a very, very succinct minority, then, you know, is that fair? And I think my, my, my response or reply to that would be, well, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's being done. It's a special consideration or accommodation being done to help achieve our overall learning solution that we're proposing for the fall. But but I do question, you know, at the point where the student is in high school, is there really a compelling reason to do that where they may be already, you know, able to remote learn on their own at that developmental stage?
Part of the issue might be, Craig, that when I put out the survey, because I did want to get it out as quick as possible, I, I did not articulate exactly what the model would be. In other words, when the survey went out, I didn't say we'd have a remote learning room, I guess is what I'm calling it. That some folks may have, particularly at the high school level, thought that, well, that's great. They'll be in, particularly as we have more of a synchronous movement of the lesson, that they'll be in both cohorts, which, you know, can't happen. It's just not safe, it's not safe for mixing cohorts. And that I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate for that at this point. So I believe that number may actually be higher at the, at the upper levels. That's why, you know, if we're looking at just this, it it might be, I don't know. I mean, I I'm not sure because if I, I mean, right now, I'm just looking to see if I can use that very small number of our staff who have kids go to Cohasset schools to be able to afford it for them. If we want to try to expand that, then it becomes, you know, would, would me articulating the model as I have today, would that make a difference in numbers? Do we have time to do that? Remember, I just want to emphasize that this was very last minute on all of us. And I got that survey out. It was Friday night, the information came out to me, and I had that out before the weekend was over. So I did this as quickly as humanly possible. It's only like two weeks ago. I mean, this is very quick in terms of turnover. A lot of districts didn't even, didn't even go for it. They didn't even like send out a survey because they just said it's too late. All our cohorts are set, everything's done. And I know where they're coming from, you know, they didn't want to cause disruption to where they were. I was trying to, I want to help as many, not that they don't, but I really felt like we needed to help as many people as we can. So I was interested in getting the numbers so we could at least have a shot at it. But because of that, I didn't articulate fully what it would be because I had a day and I hadn't talked to my team, I hadn't talked to anybody. So I did the best I could with it.
And it's, and it's really, I know you've said it, Dr. Sullivan, but it's, it's really just a space for kids to be. That's kind of a distraction free zone, that's a safe spot. There's no additional teaching happening. It's really just a spot for their, for the two students of the teachers that are working in Cohasset and have their kids in the Cohasset School District.
Yeah, I mean, the person might redirect them or, you know, help them a little bit, but that's not really their role.
No, no.
Well, I I guess I'd only, I'd only support this, I think, in so much as it it would provide that sort of. And I do want to clarify, just in case anyone's confused about this. This isn't like hiring teachers to provide additional or separate instruction to those individuals. It's just basically an onsite housing of the teacher's children so that they can perform their remote learning in the building so they're not alone, alone at home. Which is, which is, which is why I think if I'm going to support this, I would only support it K through eighth grade. I don't see the need for the high scores to be in person. I really don't. I I think that if you're 14 through 18 years old, you're able to developmentally, you're able to access, you know, all applicable and relevant, you know, programs over the internet, on the computer, or follow instruction remotely. You can take care of yourself, you can be at home locally, you don't need your parent there in order to accomplish those goals. And that's really what I think the impetus is behind this. And so if I. And so, if I'm going to support this, I would only support it for K through eight, I think. And even, you know, with eighth grade, I think it's stretching it, but I think that the high school is an appropriate cutoff for, for that. So, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I kind of want to get it, I think it's important that we sort of come to a conclusion or a consensus on this, because it's, it's better to sort of, in my opinion, and this may not be the consensus of the committee, but in my opinion, it's better to sort of square this away now, so that we can plan for it, as school is coming up in the very near future. So I, I don't know if there's any other discussion points from the school committee at this point, I, I, you know, please, please speak now, because I'd like to sort of address this with some form, sort of, some degree of finality tonight.
I guess just one point I would like to make is that I mostly agree with you, Craig, on the high scores, but I think that as we've talked about so many times, and will continue in the future, every kid is so different. And I think, and this year is not totally comparable to the spring, but I just have many friends and colleagues who do have high school students who found it hard to be a self-starter in the remote model, so I don't know if, I understand and appreciate what you're saying, I just don't know if that needs to be considered on a case-by-case basis. Or if maybe someone who already needs support is already being provided support, and Mrs. Erwanka has already kind of helped support with that, but I'm, just something to consider, just because it's, you know, they are still minors, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I, I just don't a hundred percent agree with that.
Okay. That's important part of the process. Mrs. Colery, Mrs. Mar, any further thoughts on this?
I agree with Lydia. I think that I can see a hundred percent where you're coming from on the differentiation based on, you know, so, the ability to be independent legally, to be at home, right? But I, I do agree that each child is different, and that it, that makes it difficult for us to have a cutoff age, I think. When, if we're going to consider offering this as a potential solution, I do, I do think it would benefit us to have it be available to all of the students that would be school age. That's my personal opinion.
Mrs. Mar?
Um, I have concerns, because I, I, I need to see the numbers and the funding source. So if it's put to a vote tonight, I would feel very uncomfortable voting on it, because I, I don't, I don't know the numbers on it, and, and where the money will come from, and, and what will get cut for this. I agree with you, Mr. McClellan, on the high school kids. Yes, they're all different, however, we're going to have dozens, if not hundreds, of kids home, perhaps alone, while their parents work, who are not children of, of teachers in Cohasset, who will be required to be self-starters and to be motivated, and, and hopefully, our model this fall of instruction, as opposed to last spring, and, you know, attendance and some, and some of the rigor that we have put into our remote learning will help our high school kids from grades nine through twelve develop some of that self-starting motivation and requirements that we have. So I have concerns about budget, and, and how we're exactly going to do this, what it's going to look like financially. And I just don't feel like I have enough information right now.
I think that's a good point, you know, and I sort of, I, 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 I think it's a good point, and, and I think the, the financial elements of it are important to address, probably to make an informed decision on it, I, I just have, Dr. Sullivan, what is your position on how much time we would need in order to effectively roll this out? I mean, like, so the next, the next school committee meeting isn't until the sixteenth, which is, you know, only a few days before the first day of, of school for the students. I mean, I, I mean, if we're, if we're waiting till then to post these positions, I mean, it's not even going to be feasible at that point in time.
Well, not if you want it to start at the beginning of the year, but I mean, if it, you know, I mean, I, I don't want to rush something if we're not sure about details here, but, I mean, my, my goal is to try to provide as much as I can for any, anyone, really, I mean, I don't want to just do it for staff, but I also think, if I could provide it for staff, I, I want to do that as an employer, just as any employer would for his or her staff, if they, if they really care and want to help people, help them. I don't know, I, we could certainly, I could certainly do, it would depend on the will of the committee, and what the committee really wanted me to, to look at, you know, I mean, I could send out another survey to the community to find out the numbers based on the model being articulated, and see if that changes. I don't know, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's quite a, quite a turnaround and some work to do it, but we can do that, it's worth it. And then, or, you know, I, I'm pretty confident that the numbers won't be higher than twenty-six, they may actually be lower than that, just with our staff who have students going to Cohasset public schools. I, I believe I can, if we, we could secure some of the funding, and Susan can give us a little sense about the, the grant and what that is, and I, I think we could turn it around fairly quickly. The issue becomes hiring the, the staff, and there's a lot of need for these types of positions out there in, in many school systems across the Commonwealth, and there are, are, you know, it's a, it's a hot commodity right now, and, you know, they're not paid an exorbitant amount, so you really have to have the right type of person who wants to, to help kids, and isn't necessarily so ruled by the current situation that they don't want to come in for, which isn't amounting to a, a giant salary, and you're basically being paid hourly. So there's a lot of ifs, but I, I don't think the time, time isn't as, as of the essence, unless we want to start this situation for people right at the beginning of the year, which is a wonderful thing to do, because let's face it, that's what you're trying to do, you're trying to set routines at the beginning of the year, you're trying to get that going, but, and, you know, so that's, in all of this, I feel really badly about, because it was pushed right to the end, I, I, sort of out of my control. I just want people to know that.
Okay, well, here's what I would suggest on this. You know, I, I really wanted to sort of put this issue to bed, but I, I agree, I think Mrs. Mar makes an excellent point, I mean, we just really don't have the, all the facts in front of us in order to make an informed decision on it, and, and perhaps we may be able to, I mean, really, the question is, is, you know, how much is it going to cost, and where's the money coming from? And how's, what's it going to cost, I, I think is probably something we could, we could estimate tonight with some degree of accuracy, based on other ESPs that have been hired, and then we could, we're having the finance update, there's an update on the grant expenditures, and we can see what the balance of that is, I mean, I can't imagine that additional ESPs that were hired for the sole purpose of facilitating remote learning wouldn't be something that would fall within the parameters of the, the grant, but perhaps Ms. Owen would know more about that, so what, what maybe we can do is table this until that portion of the meeting, that's the update on grant expenditures, and at that point, if we still don't feel we have the information, or we can't figure it out, then we'll table it for the next meeting and discuss it then, and, and as you said, Dr. Sullivan, I mean, you know, we may not be able to get the staff, staffing that's necessary to roll it out immediately, but, you know, if the school committee votes for it at that time, then perhaps we can roll it out at some other juncture that would still assist the teachers, yes, Mrs. St. Ange?
I'm, I'm just looking at the numbers, and I'm wondering if Dr. Sullivan resurveyed only the Cohasset Public School teachers with a clear layout of what this would entail, and got, so got an accurate number of who's interested in this model. And then if we, like, if we looked at the existing numbers, and let's say the people with high school children think, oh, I don't really want that kind of coverage, I just wanted my kids to be there every day, which is totally understandable, many of us do. You know, if that left us with K through seven currently, and there are sixteen kids, and we could split K through three and four through seven, I mean, you know, if there are eight kids and two aides, I don't know what kind of rooms, but if these kids aren't eligible for a bus anyway, you know, might it be okay if they were at a school that was not their own? Just to try to think creatively about like, minimizing expenditure, and again, maximizing staff. If we were eight and eight, just a thought.
Yeah, you have to be careful about how you combine kids.
You do, yeah, I mean, we're already,
Yeah.
We're, by grade, you'd be combining by school, and, and actually, you know, even in this model, the model that I was promoting, we would be combining classes at the elementary level. So you know, if you have, you, you'd be combining grades at the elementary level, and, and they're being separated, so that it's not exactly at all levels, and at the elementary, the middle, and the high school, they just would happen to be going at the same time. So it isn't, it isn't, I, it's not perfect, so that, that's another thought there. Everything is so tricky, guys, I'm just, I feel like I'm causing more problems than, than not, I'm just trying to bring this up, because I know it's something that's important to my staff, and I want to try to help with it if I can.
All right, well, let's see if we can maybe, once Ms. Owen provides us with the update on the grant expenditures, if we can have some other discourse that may, you know, give us a little bit more information and make an informed decision, otherwise, I don't see how we can make the decision today. I really wanted to sort of put this to bed, because I know it's, I, I'm seeing, I'm going to, I, I'm going to take a bunch of questions right now. I, I am seeing a bunch of concerns from the community about this, you know, I think that people have, they always did have childcare concerns, you know, families did that, did have that from the very beginning of this conversation. I think this is sort of reigniting that flame, or that fire, that, that was, you know, based on equity, and, you know, whether teachers are getting childcare when everyone else isn't, and, you know, it's important to everyone, so I don't know if we're going to be able to put it to bed tonight, but, but I'd ask, I mean, is everyone comfortable just waiting to get a sort of an update on the grant expenditures, and then revisiting this later on in the meeting, see if maybe we can have a more meaningful discourse about it, if not, then tabling it for the next meeting, is that okay with everyone at this point? All right, so, I'm just, there's, there's a few, well, let's just go on to the next issue that, that Dr. Sullivan posed to the school committee, and then I'll take the, the reentry-related discussion points from the members of the public I see coming in. He asked us to kinds of the types of masks, if we wanted to specify the types of masks. As you may recall, our policy is, is fairly broad in, with respect to the types of masks, it, it uses the term face coverings and masks fairly interchangeably, so it doesn't, you know, specify, obviously, or expressly enumerate the types of acceptable face coverings or masks, so perhaps this is a good time to have this discussion, everyone can share their thoughts on, on how specific we could should get, and, and operationally, how our superintendent should maybe approach this. Any points of discussion, Mrs. Colery?
Um, I think it's important to recognize that we are all operating within the confines of a very unique situation, and doing the best that we can to react in a timely manner to the information that we have, and that that information is going to continue to change. I think it's important that we remain open to reviewing and revising our policies based on that changing information, and I would be in favor of reviewing the mask policy and considering amending the policy. I wonder, and I would look to other members of the committee for their thoughts on whether this is something that maybe would be best. I, I, it's, it's probably an overarching policy, I was going to say whether we can address it through student handbooks and, and building-based materials, but it, it probably should be a district-wide policy, but I, I would be in favor of amending the mask policy, to be a little more specific, at the very least, not permitting gators, because I do think there's an abundance of data that, that isn't as effective.
Mrs. Mar?
Um, I agree with Mrs. Colery, I think we can add it to our policy, but also it could be considered part of the protocol, so school committee develops the policy, and then superintendent puts together the operating protocol, and he could define the types of masks that are allowable in the protocol, because the policy could be, should be overarching, but these are unique times, and perhaps being more specific in our policy, and then in the follow-up protocols, is a proper way to go, so that there's absolutely no confusion over what's acceptable and not acceptable, but they should mirror each other.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Um, I, I agree with, with both women, I think that perhaps being specific about a face mask rather than a gator, as Mrs. Colery said, and as the school nurses shared some literature with us, and I had read other studies that gators, I think, rate lower than no mask when tested in terms of protecting from things coming in and out. So, yes, would that be done in our policy subcommittee meeting? Do we discuss it and change it now, do we need to run it by counsel, legal counsel, like, what, what do we need to do for that?
So I don't think, I think we should just, we can just, I know that this, this policy subcommittee is meeting soon, I think we posted a meeting, and Mrs. Colery, Mrs. St. Ange, you may know, I, I don't recall that the meeting date.
On the tenth, it's on the tenth, I believe.
All right, so it's before the next meeting, I mean, why don't we just add that, you know, to your, to your, you know, sort of to-do list in that committee, subcommittee? And, you know, I think we can probably, you know, do a little legwork and see, you know, what is, you know, meet CDC guidelines, how we can specify it, look, I look at the policy as, you know, speaking as an attorney, I look at the policy as, you know, kind of like a, you know, analogous to a statute. And when there's ambiguity in a statute, that leads to issues and problems, and, you know, disputes that arise out of the various interpretations of that, you know, particular legislation, so I think if we have the ability to draft our policy in as specific a manner possible, then we should probably capitalize on that. And I think that once we have that, then we can likely, you know, send it to council for review, and make sure that it's not, you know, illegal in any way, or placing any sort of illegal constraints on anyone for any reason. And then, and then present it, you know, as a sort of, as a revised policy for vote at that September sixteenth school committee meeting, that's probably the prudent course of action, everyone agree with that, I think everyone basically agreed with that in their statement itself. So that's, I guess, how we'll proceed on that, Dr. Sullivan, at this point.
Yeah, makes sense.
All right. So I'm just going to move to, I see, you know, there's a few comments here, that's all, they're all related, I think, mostly, most of them are related to the reentry plan, so I'm just going to take them at this time. Mrs. Karen Katchapudi, I believe you pronounce it in that manner, I'm sorry again if I'm, if I'm mispronouncing your names. Karen Katchapudi of Fifteen Lightwood Farm states, "It is not appropriate or in compliance with public meeting law rules for school committee or superintendent to refuse to answer questions because they may have been discussed in previous formats. People connect when and how they can, our citizens have the right to submit requests for clarification." So, I, I think that this might, this was, this was asked a while ago, this might be in response to comment I made after, I think Ms. DiLorenzo had asked for clarification on the remote learning model, which had been discussed at, at numerous prior meetings. I had made that comment, I don't, I mean, this is a tough comment, because I think that the school committee and the district leadership has, has really done everything it possibly can to ensure that everyone's voice has been heard throughout this process. I'm sorry that this particular person feels that somehow myself, or Dr. Sullivan, or any members of the school committee or leadership are somehow restraining people's ability to share their thoughts, or have their points addressed. But, but I did follow up with Ms. DiLorenzo, and I had not heard back from her, so it's, and I asked her if she feels her agreement was adequately addressed, and there's no response, so I, I don't really think that there's any particular basis for this, so.
Yeah, I did, I did try to answer that as thoroughly as I could, I, I really did, so I, I wasn't trying to ignore that.
Mrs. Katchapudi continues, saying, "The most vocal, vocal argument from teachers supporting live teaching for the district's children is because the buildings are unsafe. It is hypocritical for them to request full-time, in-person, and onsite learning within these facilities. My household will be disappointed if this proposal is voted into effect, because you are not offering an equal level of teaching to the district's children." I basically, I think, articulated my particular thoughts on that, on that point, and I don't think that, you know, at this point, we're making a vote yet, or taking a vote yet, but I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Dr. Sullivan?
No, I, I'm just trying to do what I can, I guess that's what I'd say, and, you know, my, if I can do, if I can't do for the whole community, and I can do for my staff, I, I guess I'm just going to try to do what I can. That, that's kind of where I'm coming from, I want to help staff.
Ken Belay, Belay of Fifteen Lightwood Farm. Ken Blay of 15 Lightwood Farm states that "The mission of Cohasset Public Schools is to provide, quote, 'inclusive, supportive and safe learning environment committed to excellence and growth,'" unquote. "This proposal to provide a superior educational advantage to a small group of students seems discriminatory to other students in the district. How do you defend this?" I, I don't think that we're, at least from my understanding, Dr. Sullivan, we're not proposing that we're providing any additional learning to these students under this proposal, which hasn't even been, you know, effectuated yet or even fully discussed yet. It's my understanding that we're just trying to sort of, I think, further facilitate the hybrid model that we are trying to roll out for all the families in the district. Do you have anything to add, Dr. Sullivan, or anyone?
I don't, I don't really, other than what I've said. I'm just trying to create a situation that's helpful for as many people as I can in every single, every single aspect of this plan. And this is one situation where, as, as we've analyzed it, you know, we can't provide for the whole. And the question is now, is it, is it okay to provide for our staff? Because I really deeply wanna, wanna do that. So that's really my motive. It's not to exclude or be discriminatory in any way. It's just to provide for what we can in this really tough time. And like I also, you know, I'm an employer and I'm, I'm looking out for my, my team who needs this. That's really where I'm coming from on this.
Mrs. Stainage.
I think it's also important to remind everyone that this is a recommendation that came down from Commissioner Riley.
Yeah.
And so this was sent out to the whole state. And I appreciate Dr. Sullivan exploring the option with the community and now with the Cohasset Public School teachers. I think that a lot of towns are not considering it all, as you said. Some are in negotiations with their teachers' associations regarding the same issue. And a lot of people are undecided on it. So it's not just a Cohasset issue. It is a statewide recommendation that not everyone's able to follow through on.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, Mr. Blay's, or Blay states, it goes on to state, Chairman McClellan addressed the consideration that providing daycare for staff students is in the greater interest of the general learning environment. However, this comment is in direct contradiction to the letter distributed by the Cohasset School Committee. The childcare is not part of the educational curriculum. Please explain and justify how providing childcare for teachers is not in conflict with this. As this comment purports to quote something I said, I'll say this. I don't know that I said that it is in the greater interest of the general learning environment. My position on this personally, not as expressing the collective view of the, of the school committee, but my personal view of this is that considering providing an in-school opportunity for younger children of Cohasset staff that, you know, in my opinion, will help effectuate the hybrid learning model that we're proposing for the families in the fall. I think in that perspective, there's a compelling, from that perspective, there's a compelling interest in providing some, some childcare, for lack of a better phrase. And, you know, it's, again, I think that I made this clear that, you know, in the case of an older student, I really wouldn't be in support of it. I understand my colleagues have voiced their position and they disagree with me. It doesn't persuade me that I'm wrong. I still believe that older students aren't someone that I would support in having this because I do understand those equity issues concerned, or equity issues implicated by, you know, the prospect of having Cohasset staff members' children in school more than, say, another random member of our community. But to use myself as an example, I will require childcare. I come from a dual-income household, as I've stated numerous times in the past. And I have an elementary school child, a school-age child, who is not of a developmental age yet that where they can sort of log on to the internet themselves or use the computers themselves or remotely, you know, complete assignments themselves entirely, you know, solo. And, you know, my wife and I are both gonna be at work. And so we had to develop our own childcare solutions for that, that issue that, you know, we anticipate. If, if the school was to provide that childcare solution for me, that doesn't promote sort of the, the greater objective or help accomplish the greater objective of providing that, that hybrid reentry model to the community. All that does is assist me personally. And so I think that that is a different situation when you're talking about staff members who are gonna be required to be in the building. You know, obviously, if they can't be there because they don't have childcare and that's the basis for their, you know, request, then, you know, then, then that's going to diminish the number of staff or teachers that we have on hand to teach our students, teach the community students. So there's, I think there's a fairly distinct difference between those two scenarios. And, and so that's, I think, where I'm coming from. And I guess that's how I would quote, explain and justify how providing childcare for teachers is not in conflict with providing childcare for the community at large. Any other members of the committee want to say anything? Or Dr. Sullivan, any, any other comments?
No, I think you hit it.
Mr. Christopher Allen, he's addressing, he says, "What is the board considering for childcare remedies for the rest of the community that are not teachers?" I know we do, Dr. Sullivan, have a, later on in your report, you're gonna be talking about that before and after-school updates. But I don't know if there's anything you want to address now with regards to this issue?
Yeah, about allocating spending for teachers' children?
Well, no, I think he asked, "What is the board considering for childcare remedies for the rest of the community that are not teachers?"
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong one. Well, right now, we were looking, I mean, it's not really childcare, except you do have the ability to drop off your son or daughter earlier in the day because if you're in the before-school program. And then after-school in the, at the, is it at the Ausgood, Dr. Scollins?
Yeah, so it's, right. So those students who, if you're cohort A, on those days, you could come before school and stay after school till six. So seven o'clock in the morning and then till six o'clock.
So it, so it does provide that service. And you will hear a little more about that later on in the presentation. You know, as, as we mentioned, we did, did try to broach the thought of having, it was really, it's just so hard. We just don't have the space to fit significant programming in there and still have our kids distanced at a six-foot space. You know, there are some municipal, or a three-foot space even. There are some municipality possibilities for that. If the town of Cohasset determined they wanted to go and provide, provide such a resource, that would be something that we could explore potentially. But, you know, I don't know, you may know a little more about that, Dr. Scollins?
I do. So here it's a possibility that if a municipality would like to have a school-age program during the day to support families, they can. But again, that would be, you know, through the municipality, the town itself. It really has to do with the early childhood licensing. And so normally, there's a more rigorous process you have to go through. So they kind of opened that door a little bit for towns to be able to provide that. So Ted Carroll and I have talked about it. I just think it's, you know, it's, there's, there's a lot to it. It has to do with space. It has to do with staffing and finding staffings. So it's not that people don't want to do it. It's just a matter of being able to, you know, to figure that out. And I think, you know, when you get to the younger kids too, you have to be, your numbers change around how many kids can be there and how much, how many adults you need. So there's a lot to it. And you need the space and the safety, you know, and that's, that's the bigger piece.
So we were looking at, we're looking at options. We've been looking at options. It's just, we haven't landed on anything.
Yeah, it's just really hard. It's, the space is, that's a really big issue.
It is. And again, you know, the before and after-school programs, that update will be coming a little bit later in your report, Dr. Sullivan. So I think that may shed some, a little bit more light on that sort of issue, a topic related to that issue, anyway. Is that accurate, just before and after-school?
Yeah, I don't know. We have a tremendous amount more to, we will be able to update a little more. But I'm not sure it'll shed light on additional opportunities. I think it is essentially that, just a little more thoroughly explained.
Right. I think that's what I meant. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Just moving on, Nicholas Stalopoulos of 39 Monhill Lane. He states, "The CDC continues to recommend, quote-unquote, 'face coverings' and not any specific mask type in non-hospital environments. There's no consensus about which masks are more effective. Are your committee going to review the raw scientific data? And who has the expertise to do that in order to make recommendations about which face covering is safer? Why you do not simply follow the CDC guidelines and their expertise? Gators are considered safe by CDC and are more acceptable, easier to wear by kids than masks."
Yeah. I mean, our, our school nurses have done significant research on masks. And I'd be more than willing to make that available to the, I'm looking at it right now, to the, just give me a second, to the actual committee here, if you'd like to look at that as you explore it and in your policy. I think that's probably a better use of time than me going over it right now. But it does talk a lot about the CDC recommendations, the new data that's come out, some really important studies that have come out regarding what, what does constitute an effective mask. And it does include that, that research that was done regarding gators. So I'd also be glad to share in any way that the community would like to, if it's appropriate. But I would have to find it and we could discuss it. But it would be at the, the word of the committee. If you want me to, I can find it. We can put it on the screen and actually talk about it. Or you can wait and do that in, in your policy meeting, where you can look a little more at the science.
Well, here's my personal, Mrs. Colery, do you have any thoughts on that?
I have a, we do it at a policy meeting. It'll be posted. It's posted, so.
I think that that's the appropriate forum for it. I don't know whether, I mean, I know it begs the question, if you're saying there's been some research done and this gentleman is asking for, you know, you know, what information you're gonna be reviewing and considering. You know, it does beg the question, are you gonna share with the community? Can you share with the community? I don't see why you wouldn't be able to, but that, I don't know. Dr. Sullivan, you may have some better insight into that.
I, I don't. I mean, I, would I be willing to share with the committee is the research that my team of school nurses have done, that they shared with me, that really made me think it was an important thing to bring to your attention because it was, it was pretty compelling about the type of mask that, that people should have, have and to be safe in a school building.
Okay. So, so there's a, so Mrs. Colery, could you state that, again, I think it's sort of September 10th, the date and time of the subcommittee meeting, it's posted, it's an open meeting, people can attend. And then after that, I'm sure we'll, we'll be able to post that as we discuss it in the full committee meeting after you, you know, decide on whatever language you're gonna propose. But what is, what is the date and time for that subcommittee meeting?
September 10th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, September 10th at 6:00 PM. So you can, you can also join in there. This is not being done today. It's not being done tonight. So you have plenty of opportunities to, or plenty of time to get your, your input and insight heard. And we'd ask you to do that. And Mr. Stalopoulos, we appreciate your ongoing participation in the process. I think it leads to the most constructive solutions here. So please, I'd urge everyone that has an interest in this mask issue to attend that subcommittee meeting. And then after the subcommittee meeting, the, any sort of consensus or proposal will be then presented to the whole committee for a vote. And there'll be another opportunity for public discussion on it at 10.
And there, just so the, the person who wrote the question knows, there, there's a whole bevy of data from the CDC that talks about, and this is rather new, but it talks about how to select, wear and clean your mask. And it does talk about various masks that work and don't work. It said, and right from the CDC website, it says, "Gators and face shields." And it says, "Evaluation is ongoing, but effectiveness is unknown at this time." And so it does very specifically talk about gators in the CDC guidelines.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. I don't, I don't think that I see any other new questions or comments from the community relative to the reentry roadmap. Are there any other comments from the committee on this issue, on this part of the superintendent's report? Seeing none, I'd ask you to move on. Dr. Scollins, could you discuss the professional development update with us?
I can't.
Yeah, so. So professional development, we were gonna defer to Athletic Director Rotandi, if we could.
Oh, okay.
To do, to do his report. Is that okay, Dr. Scollins?
It's fine with me, as long as the committee's okay with it.
Yeah, so sorry about that. I just was, I was just going in order, so that's.
No, you are. I know. I just, I just want to give Athletic Director a chance. And then basically, he's sandwiched between two reports by Leslie anyway. So it might make sense if the committee's fine with that.
Sure. We're always looking forward here from Mr. Rotandi.
So we, Dr. Rotandi, if you would take, take over, one of the things that we're very happy about is that we're gonna have some sports in the fall. And that is a, that's, again, back to normal. There's some normalcy in that. There's a beauty in that and very excited about it. So Athletic Director Rotandi's gonna talk a little bit about that today. So take it away, Steve.
All right. Hi, everyone. Thank, thank you for having me. As Dr. Sullivan just mentioned, we are gonna have sports. So that's been a very exciting news and time for us. I'd say the summer for me has mostly been coming up with one plan to shortly after, crumple it up and throw it away and start from scratch. But now we have a direction and we're going and it's pretty positive. So I just kind of wanted to highlight really some of the information that's out there and also where the community can find it. And then kind of what they can expect going forward as we prepare to get, get sports and athletics started. So really, what the, the initial guidance that came out is that for sports this fall, we're gonna be able to offer boys and girls soccer, field hockey, cross-country and golf. The sports that we're unable to offer is football and cheerleading. But what they did in following that was they added a new season. So typically, we have our three seasons, fall, winter and spring. But to completely not take football and cheer off the table was the MIAA has created four seasons now. So it's actually gonna be an early spring to late spring run. The, the new added season, they're calling it the Fall Two Season, would start February 22nd and run till April 24th. And just to share a little extra information on that, the idea of creating this season was because, you know, football and cheer under modifications aren't safe enough to be played at this point. But they also created it not just for those sports, that, that timeline is available to any other sport that doesn't get played throughout the year for safety or, you know, finances, whatever it is. If a community can't offer a sport, they can defer to put it into that time slot. So that's, that's really where we are with that. And then everything, all the information that's out right now, it just applies to our fall sports, which I really think it's great, the COVID Task Force and the MIAA. I think they did a great job that they really just focused on this fall and getting it going. Situation's so fluid, so taking each season by season was, was really a great approach on, on their part. Sports modifications came out this week. So, you know, kind of my communication that will be going out to the kids is a lot of our sports are gonna look different. Soccer and field hockey have very different looks to them this fall. But really, the, the idea and the plan of these committees was to give kids the opportunity to get back out on the field and participate in athletics safely. So we're excited. We have the opportunity and we're gonna embrace these modifications sport by sport as, as we go through most of these. So what I did today, and it could be fun this afternoon, I'd want to direct really anyone or the community. If you go to our CohassetAthletics.com, right on the right-hand side and big, it says announcements. And what I basically did was copy and paste the links from the MIAA's communication to some of the motions and voting that took place in making these decisions, the EEA guidelines on what is safe for youth and amateur sports. And then I put a link to each individual sport guideline. So I wouldn't say any of it's exciting or fun reading, but I would encourage, you know, our families to go on and, and just kind of take a look to get an idea of what their sport's gonna look like, how it's changed, and then really see what we can start preparing for to get, to get things started. And then for me, now that, now that we do have these modifications, I've started already meeting with our coaches individually to kind of talk through the plan. Next, we'll be having a plan with our athletics committee. And we're gonna work through some of the logistics and obstacles that we're faced in these modifications. And then we'll communicate a plan out to the, to the district and get sports registration open.
Thank you, Steve. What if the committee had questions for Steve? I wanted to talk in depth about anything or maybe there's questions out? They wanted to talk in depth about anything, or maybe there's questions out there for Steve and the community? You're on some mute.
All right, Mrs. Kaleri. Okay, Mrs. Mark.
Thank you, Steve, for the report. The MIAA said that football could practice in the fall. Is, are we going to do that?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're going to work on with the committee is that the MIAA has waived their out-of-season coaching rule. So they have a longstanding rule in place that doesn't allow coaches to work with their teams out of season. They've waived that for the year leading up to July 3rd because they feel, you know, a lot of kids just want the opportunity to be able to connect and get out there athletically. So football and cheer would fall into that same category. So if our, if our football team or our cheer team were to get together, it would be kind of under that guideline of a volunteer workout with the coach on a voluntary basis. They'd be looked at as an out-of-season sport, even though this is typically their in-season sport.
Thank you.
Welcome. Mrs. St. Orange? Okay, I guess just quickly, so, Mr. Rotandi, and you may have stated this, I apologize if you did and I didn't hear it. I'm trying to simultaneously sort of like answer some questions and keep track of what's going on. I'm also at the sort of tail end of an exhausting day here, so I'm doing my best. But, so are there, are there masks being worn by the children while they're, while they're participating in these athletic activities?
That's a great question, and I did not touch on that. But those links to the specific sport modifications, you will be able to see it. But yes, athletes are required to wear masks. Each sport has specific, an explanation as to each. So for example, if it's, if it's field hockey, if they're within 10 feet of each other, they can pull the mask down. But anything within 10 feet, the mask needs to be up. Coaches and players on the sideline or the bench do need to be wearing a mask. Runners in cross-country, once they've broken really the starting line and they've started to build separation, they can pull the mask down. But they, but they need to have a mask with them and in place to be able to pull it up when, when in close contact with a teammate, an opponent, or an official.
Are these requirements prescribed? Are they recommendations? What, I mean, this seems, I can't imagine running, I mean, I was bad enough at cross-country. I can't imagine doing it with a face mask on. So I'm just trying to, I mean, just in one example of how absurd I find this. But, but, so what's the, is it something we have to follow? And I'm not suggesting, I'm just, I'm just asking. I'm not suggesting what my position is. I'm just, I guess I am suggesting that I think it's very difficult for athletes to be wearing masks. But I'm just wondering, is it something we have to do, or is it a recommendation? What is it?
Yes, no. So this, this collaboration and the final, what was put out in writing, came from the MIAA, the EEA, DESI, and was part of the COVID Task Force work as well. So, so yeah, like I said, they kind of have it in, to your cross-country example, it's more, they have to wear the mask on the, on the starting line. But, but once they get, it has a set number, whether it's like 20 yards and they start to break apart from each other, they can pull the mask and they're not going to have to wear a mask through the entire, you know, three-mile race.
They also have to take temperatures, right, Steve?
We're not required to take temperatures.
I didn't see that in their guidance for games, before games?
No, they have, they have a checklist that they will go through. We'll use our athletic trainer, where the kids will kind of report if they've had any of these symptoms in the near time. But they're not requiring that we use like the temperature guns in order for them to participate.
Yeah, DESI's not really requiring that anywhere because of the, what they call the false readings.
Yeah, I just, I just raised it because I thought it was interesting that it was, it was sort of contradictory to what we were doing in the schools. And I thought I saw that they were asking coaches and players to take temperatures before games. But I must have misread it.
Yeah, look, look again, I'm just, you know, so, yeah, I didn't study that one as much.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
Um, I guess more as a fan, are we doing a full game schedule this fall? Like, is the state planning on going up to the, like, state tournaments and all of that? Is that the intention?
Another great question. So for the fall itself, there will be no MIAA tournament. So for these fall sports, there'll be no playoff, there'll be no state champion. But what you are allowed to do at the league and district level is really create your own tournament. So our teams will be playing a league-only schedule, and then we'll be looking at kind of a league tournament, and then can we have like a regionalized tournament? So it might not be as big as the entire state, but we are allowed to have something that could be as big as, you know, southeastern Massachusetts. And so that's on the table. And like, again, like I said, that's just for the fall. Having a winter MIAA tournament is still on the table, but just not something they're willing to discuss yet.
Thank you.
Anything else for Athletic Director Rotandi? Seeing none, thank you so much, Mr. Rotandi.
I always embrace the opportunity to wear a tie and sweatpants, so thank you.
And he's, you know, Steve has kept the ship running so we can actually transition and do sports. So I want to thank Steve for his perseverance, because I'm sure there were some dark days with your coaches trying to figure out what was going to happen. So, you know, thank you for doing everything you do for the kids and your, and your team.
I appreciate you too. Couldn't do it without the leadership team. So thank you, and everyone have a nice night. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And I'll let Steve fade off into the Zoom land.
Sure.
Neverland. And now I do turn over to, with your permission, Chairman McClellan, I turn over to Dr. Scollins to give us an update on PD and then to talk a little bit about after-school programming.
And I'm also going to give you a quick update on TECA also, which is our remote-only learning option for our students here in Cohasset. And so we have connected with TECA and have started the enrollment process. And our students will start in TECA on the 14th of September. There was a little bit of confusion. TECA knew that we started on the 22nd, so they thought that our students going into TECA would start on the 22nd. But we worked it out today, so they'll start on the 14th. So the contacts here are working with TECA and the parents, looking at course choice. And that's really mostly at the high school, the elementary, it's math read, it's math, ELA, Science and Social Studies, and it is what it is. So there's no real choice there. Little bit at the middle school, but then the high school. So parents are getting the catalogs and working with our guidance to look at those courses. So, so that is on its way, which is nice to hear. Our professional development, so I know that Dr. Scollins, I mean, Dr. Sullivan, sorry, it's been a long day, talked about that we had a great day today, and we started off this morning with our opening meeting. And then we went right into Dr. Golden for the middle and high school. And the elementary schools have been working with Bridges on their, you know, I think you have to make me a host or give me the rights to show my, share my screen, Dr. Scollins. And so that was, so that was a nice day today. Some people are in the building, and I got to kind of bounce around a little bit. And then I hung out in the, in the training this afternoon, which was, was great.
I think I gave you, did I give you the power?
I do not have the power yet.
Oh, let me give you the power.
Oh, you know, okay, there you go. Now you have the power.
You now have the power, yes, sorry.
Let's let me make sure that I can, whoops, wait a minute. Just give me a second, sorry. All right, here we go. Can you see that, Dr. Sullivan? Do you see that?
We can see it, you're, we can see the screen.
A little nervous, you never know what you're going to say. So we, this was a collaborative effort to get this professional development calendar put together. We, the Professional Development Committee worked with me. We had lots of conversations about what they thought staff would like for our professional development this year. No surprise, there was a lot of talk about remote learning, also trauma sensitivity, cultural competency, just all the kinds of things that have been going on in our schools and microcosms of what's happening in the world. So they had a strong feeling that we needed to touch upon a couple of major, major areas. We sent out a survey to the staff, again, not a surprise, remote learning was at the top. But then there was also a lot around SEL and, and trauma, because we don't know what our kids have been seeing, we don't know what their life has been like since they left us on March 13th. So we really wanted to look at all the possibilities of giving a well-rounded professional development. And I will say, I'm, I was sad that we weren't starting till the 22nd, but I'm very thankful for these extra 10 days. Never do you have 12 days of professional development to offer to your staff before the school year starts. So I'm going to take that as a gift and really be thankful for it. So, whoops, that went too fast, sorry about that. All right, so, just a couple of things. The, the colors kind of indicate the virtual piece. So all of our trainings have been virtual, so that allows for us, for people to kind of check in wherever they are. Some people are doing in the building, some people have done it from home. But we've balanced that out with also having the in-person piece around being in the building to work in their classrooms, collaborate with their teams, their departments, and their principals. We have our annual mandatory training that we have to do, and Barbara Solanka helped me with that. And that's something that every employee in the district has to partake in, and they have, it's asynchronous, and they just go through that, and that's, that has to be completed by the end of the month. And then I know that I had spoken about, with you about this before, but EdTech teacher, we hired them. And one of the things that they did was they created an asynchronous Google in remote learning training. And I've gotten lots of great feedback, and actually even people sharing with me what they've done in their, in their course. So that was kind of fun. This, last week and this week, we had our new educator institute, and that was wonderful. The new staff that we have are bright, articulate, they have energy. It was really a lot of fun, and they were very kind because I actually did a virtual training with them for the day around teacher evaluation. It was new for me, with some new, some, some new kind of tricks that I learned. And so they were very kind and patient with me while I kind of fumbled through some of them. So I had a front row seat of being back in the classroom and teaching, so that was terrific. And then just kind of a quick thing, this is the 12 days. We have other PDs throughout the year, but we really focused on the first 12 days. We do know that in September, we will be doing our safety training with the police and fire, and we'll be doing Alice and all those things. And then in October, we do hope that we'll be able to do our workshop on cultural competency that we were supposed to do in March. So everyone has said they're going to be able to do it. We'll just have to see what it looks like, and we may just have to make it a virtual conference, just like so many things other people have had to do. So I'm confident that we can probably work that out. But today, I already told you about what we did. But tomorrow, we have Dr. Golden speaking to the elementary. We tried to break up some of our speakers so that it wasn't the whole group. It can be a lot of people, so it allows it to be a little more interactive. When it's smaller, people are a little more likely to ask questions. So Dr. Golden is going to speak with the elementary group in the morning, and they will have their second virtual training with Bridges. I was in the Deer Hill today, and I will be at the Osgood one tomorrow. And the middle school and high school will be hearing from Monica Belton. And Lisa Gittens-Carl, she has done a lot to help me with our professional development. And this is one of the people that she's helped, helped us secure. And Monica's a social worker, she's worked in the educational system for a long time down in Virginia. And she does a lot around trauma and sensitivity training related to cultural competency. So she's going to really talk about some of the basic facts and basic language, I would say, five dozen facts, basic language around racism, so that everybody has kind of this common language and understanding of what the terms are. And she will not only work with our middle and high school, but then later in the schedule, oh my goodness, sorry about that, later in the schedule, she's going to work with the elementary school. Then we have Dr. Bernato and Dr. Plummer back. As you know, they did a workshop for our parents, they're going to do that for our staff on the 8th. And then he's going to do, they're going to do another program for just the special education department. The 9th and 10th, we've left it open because we need time for people to collaborate and meet with their other team members. On the 11th, we have Monica Belton coming into the elementary school. And we also have EdTech with more courses on remote learning. So this one is for the whole staff, also given by Greg Cook, and I'm not going to say his right name correctly, but he's the one who did our Google training. And he got a lot of great reviews. And then we will break up into groups, and elementary and secondary are going to have trainings in digital experiences for students and creating those lessons and activities. So that will happen on the 14th for Osgood and the middle school. And then Lauren Dargan, who is a licensed social worker that I've worked with as, as Dr. Sullivan, and she's going to do more around trauma and where kids would be around being home since the 13th of March, what they see around COVID and all those kinds of pieces. So they're going to get some strategy, she's going to give strategies to teachers and also take questions, just like Monica Belton is. And then, as you can see, we kind of flip-flopped it on the 15th so that everyone gets what they need. And then Dr. Kalise Warnham, again, Elise Gittens-Carl brought her to our attention. And she was going to be our keynote speaker last year at our March training, but unfortunately that was canceled. But she's going to really kind of set us up for what it's going to look like in October, and then our future work in cultural competency. So we'll be doing some more work with her in the future, and not just, I'm not destined at this time, and also in October, but probably a little bit later also. And then we have the Norfolk County DA, they're going to come in, and they actually worked with us the past couple of years, and they actually, again, it will be virtual. They will be doing some work around mandated reporting and answering people's questions about that. And then Dr. Warnham will work with the middle and high school. So then, whoops, I'm sorry, I keep doing, I keep hitting the wrong button. And then we open up our schedule, because school is going to start on the 18th and the 21st, our building-based days to allow people to really get ready for the students. And today, I walked around the building and I went into a kindergarten class, and they were trying to figure out ways to make sure that kids had enough space so they could be in their seat. They could sit on a mat next to their seat, they could get up and stand around, and they were literally taking tape and putting it on the floors. It was, it was really great, so I was kind of checking in on, with everybody to see how things were going. So they absolutely need time in their buildings to be able to do all of those little, not little, large activities to make sure that they're ready for their kids. So that's professional development. Any questions about that before we move into the before and after school?
This is great. Thank you, Dr. Scollins.
You're welcome. So I'll be pulling the PD committee together, and we'll finish up the rest of the year. But we really kind of wanted to see how this went the first 12 days, see how people are feeling, and then kind of address what they need in the future.
Huge kudos to Dr. Scollins, to Barbara Solanka, to the whole, Elise Gittens-Carl, the whole PD team. They really did a crack-a-jack job on it. We've given them a lot of resources, they'll be very ready for the students.
Really important, a huge amount of work, Dr. Scollins, thank you so much. It was really, really, it's a huge amount of work, I can't really emphasize that enough.
It was actually really fun. Like I said, we don't really have time to do that. And one of my favorite jobs in this role is being able to provide resources for teachers and give them those opportunities to grow, because that's what they want to do, and that's what's good for our kids, so.
There is a, any points of discussion from the committee? Before I take, there is a question from the community related to the professional development. Anyone have any comments?
I just wanted to ask a quick TECA question, because last time we had talked about numbers were going to be final, like the final, final number, and I'm just curious what that ended up being.
You know, let me check it for sure, let me just pull it up. It was below 40s.
What was that for, Dr. Scollins? What's the number?
At TECA, I see, I'm just looking at the actual numbers right here, sorry, I closed it out, I shouldn't have done that, I closed it out on my screen.
The number in TECA?
Yeah, so we had 40.
It was a 46, so some of that.
I'm sorry, we had, so 47, not low 40s, high 40s, so 47, 46.
Thank you.
Yeah, 47, so.
Anyone else from the committee? All right, Mr. Belais, or Ken Belais or Belais asks, and his. and his address has been read, I think it's 15 Ledwood Farm Drive. I think it's been read into the record in connection with prior inquiries. He asks, it seems like teachers take 90 minutes to four hours of training per day. Why couldn't this have been considered to fewer day?
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, so the trainings themselves are in blocks of anywhere from an hour to two, two and a half hours of training. So that's when they're actively involved in it. A lot of times there was work that has to be done independently outside of that. But also the, the commissioner had us give them an additional 10 days. So we changed the, we changed the calendar for everyone. So we went to 170 days from 180 and then we had the extra days for professional development. And that was from the commissioner. So that's why, that, that's why there's the 10 days and it hasn't been condensed. We also need to make sure that our teachers have time in their classrooms without, without having a specific professional development. They need time in their classrooms. They need to collaborate. They need to work with their teams. There's a lot to be done and they're in a new environment. So even though it's the same school, it looks different and they have to be thinking differently. They have to learn protocols around safety. There's lots of different things that have to occur. What I showed you is really just the things that we've booked out where we have consultants coming in, right? There's a lot of other things that happen during those 12 days.
They are full days and they're also, remember, creating social emotional plans. They're, everything that they're doing, with the exception of, you know, really asking questions of, of the doctor today, which is more informative to them and hopefully reassuring and, you know, will, will help us be better at what we do to provide safe environments for our staff and for our kids. Everything is connected to their own independent professional development work. And as Dr. Sollans said, the protocol list is pretty heavy. I mean, you probably saw from the 85-page document that we put out, there's a lot of things to consider. And every one of those points is crucial because they all involve your kids. So that's why we need to take care and give them the time and the attention and the ability to have the collaborative discussions and the ability to, to really get comfortable within the space. Every, every minute's being used for, for that. And believe me, we're going to be better for it. I guarantee that.
Okay. Anyone else seeing none? Thank you so much, Dr. Sollans.
Alright, and then just a quick update on the before and after school program.
Right.
So we are working, we are working toward opening the program the 28th of September. That's our hope. The first, the, when the kids start on the 22nd, those are half days. And we have staff in the buildings and some of our staff will be working the before and after school program. And they won't be available at that time because they'll be in school still with us, even though the children are home, they're still going to be working. So, so we thought the 28th would give us a good cushion also as we're still developing this. And we've had, you know, some good response for, you know, for hiring, so we're going to finish up that process. The position we're still looking for is a director for the program and the director is someone, they're on site. They help with the creation, the planning, the creation, but they also work with kids. So that's where we're at. But there'll be a program at the elementary school, which will be at Osgood. And I think I already said it earlier, but it will be drop off at seven till the school starts. And they'll be cleaning in between. They'll be housed in the cafeteria, but mostly outside. So Ted and I talked about that and that's the recommendation from the state is be outside as much as you can. Even probably parent drop off and pickup will be outside rather than having adults come in, other adults come into the building. So we're working out kind of all those protocols. And then in the afternoon, the build, the cafeteria will be cleaned again, obviously after, after lunch. And then after the students leave at six o'clock from the after-school program. And at the middle and high school, there'll be a before-school program and that's also a drop-off at seven. Both programs will offer breakfast or for those, it's a grab and go breakfast.
And did you say, Dr. Sollans, you may have, because I'm getting bleary-eyed too. Did you say that it's going to start on September 28th, correct?
Yeah, that's on Monday. Yeah, so that, that is our plan. So that's what Ted, Carol and I are working on.
Yep, that's great. Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much. Dr. Sullivan, does that conclude the superintendent's report for tonight's meeting?
It does, it does. Unless the team has anything to add or that, that concludes that end of the report.
Okay, seeing none, I move on to the finance report and turn to Ms. Owen, our Director of Finance and Operations.
Good evening. Do, do you want me to bring it up on my screen? Nope, never mind.
Is that the one you want?
The, the August update. It's more of a, a Word document.
Yeah, just bear with me for one second and I will bring it up. It's August update, month, it says monthly update, you mean?
This is Finance and Operations August update.
Okay, I got it. I swear I have it. Hold on. Is that it? No?
No. I mean, I, I have it. I just don't know if you can share your screen.
I think I got it now. Okay, this must be it. Does it say expenditure summary fiscal year 2021 on top of it?
No.
So it says town and class's school budget summary from 7/1/2020, that one?
No.
Oh, okay. I don't know if I have the doc, which is maybe part of my problem. Let me open my email. Let you talk a little, Sue, and I will get my email.
Okay, I mean, I, I have it here.
Do you have it, Dr. Sollans?
I'm looking right now. Basically, it's just, I mean, a slight update. It's kind of a combination. I know that the agenda said monthly update and grants. I'm going to, it's kind of all in one right now. So just a brief on the, the school budget, the operating budget, we know was voted at the $20,960. We've expended $690,974 to date. We've encumbered purchase orders in the amount of $128,958, leaving a balance of $20,141,297. No, no area of concern at this point because we're still very early on. I think once staff get back in the buildings and we get rolling, we'll start to see some expenditures coming through a little bit quicker. But there are no areas that I'm concerned with at this point. I don't know if you have any questions on the LEA. It's pretty straightforward right now.
Any committee members? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Ms. Owen.
Okay, so then on, next on that sheet is the update of the grants. So I, I added a column to the far right. You could see the Metco, the school improvement, the sped early childhood. The sped IDA Title I and Circuit Breaker. I gave you the opening balance, if there was any carryover, the revenue for the year, our expenditures for the year and the ending balance. So Metco had no ending balance, school improvement had about $313. The sped IDA had $20,926. And Circuit Breaker, obviously, we brought in $723,279. And we rolled that from last year to this year to be spent. Allocations for '21. Metco is, is the same at this point. I'm sure there'll be an allotment sent somewhere along the line. They usually increase. The school improvement has gone down a little bit. Sped early childhood went up by $44. The 240 sped IDA went up a little bit, Title I went down. And Circuit Breaker is a TBD. They haven't released yet that yet. And then we're getting to the new grants that everyone was, was mentioning earlier. So we've got three, three new grants that just, that have just come out in the last few months. We've got the School Emergency Relief Fund, which is $53,185. That grant specifies that it can be used for implementing procedures to improve preparedness for opening school. We can use it for PD. We can use it for providing principals with the resources necessary to address needs of the school. So it's kind of vague. We can use it for cleaning and sanitizing, supplies and materials, tech, technology, other activities and some mental, mental health supports. So there's $53,000 there. Then we get into the big grant, the school reopening grant, which is $328,725. That one, we just, we just submitted on Friday. Tentatively, like I said, we can do amendments. We've allotted that to pay for a portion of the Director of Technology and Digital Learning, a .5 nurse, some activity assistants, some custodial, additional part-time custodial staff, contracted services and PD, building supplies, sanitation supplies, petitions, plexigas, tents, all those kind of PPE things that we've been purchasing. And then some text materials and then maintenance of equipment. So I mean, it's a big grant. I know there was concern of, you know, do we have enough to support some of these other activity aids? I guess the deck grant can, we can write amendments to either one of these grants. But between the 328 and the 53, we have quite a bit of money to spend on the reopening. I don't know if there's questions on those.
There is, there is a question from a member of the community that's been waiting patiently until we arrived at this juncture of the meeting. Sarah McSweeney of 14 Summer Street asks, can you please provide specifics on the grant for funding for the children of the Cohasset teachers coming into the school? How much is the grant and where is it coming from? And was there a discussion on that grant and it is only, and is it only earmarked for this particular use? So I think you were just getting into that, Ms. Owen, and that you were alluding to the fact that we have, I think it was 323 plus 53 or some, something around that figure that, that could potentially be dedicated, allocated for those ESPs for, for that purpose. So I, I would like to make clear that this, this isn't something that has been approved yet. And so, but, but to be clear, clear, that grant isn't just for that purpose. It's for anything to assist with the reopenings of the schools, correct?
Correct.
And that, but it does fit under that shell if we, if we should wish it, it would. It's within the, in the realm of it.
Okay, and I mean, to that effect, I mean, I, I did say, I mean, so I'd ask you this, you did statement, well, I'm sorry. Let's go in order here. Mr. Cleary, do you have any comments in this area? No, Mrs. Marr?
Yeah, that, so the grants total 404,000. And I'd like to see them itemized. I know we, we went through kind of quickly what they're earmarked for. And I'd also like Mrs. Owens, if we could look at this and have.
She froze.
She froze.
But she's very still, but I think.
Yeah, I think a lot of people are having.
It's raining.
Ellen, we lost you for a bit.
Lost her again. Yeah, welcome to Cohasset.
I'm going to guess that she, she wants to probably see the, the budget page of the grants and how, how we wrote that grant up, which I absolutely can get to you. That would, my guess, that's what she's looking for. I don't believe the, the smaller grant has a very definitive budget. I think that's still open at this point. So we can, we can pretty much write that whatever way, you know, we, we choose to.
That's the $53,000 one, correct?
Yes, yes. But I can definitely send you the, the budget allotments for the 328,000.
Yeah, we had to earmark that originally we, it was pretty broad, a broad brush when we looked at the 53,000 in terms of support and remote learning. And certainly if we were to use that money for the purpose that is being in question here, it would fit.
Correct. And I mean, I know there was a concern about the cost of the activity aids. I mean, their, their, their salary range is like $12 and change to 14, 44 per hour. So it's a portion of the day. There's, it's 170 days, but it's really probably 136 days because they're not in on Wednesdays. So I mean, it's about ballpark nine, anywhere from $9,000 to $11,000 per activity aid if we had them in the length of the school day. So that kind of gives you an idea of what it would cost if we added several.
At times four.
Correct. So I don't know. Any other questions, Ellen?
Sorry, I'm so sorry about my internet. Yeah, I, I think I'd still like to see some more detail. I really, I really want to have a much more thorough understanding of what, and for the grants and then the actual expenditures on, on the existing, you know, our, our pretty standard grants.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I, I hear that. I wanted to, I wanted to address this tonight, but I, I get it, I get it, Mrs. Marr. And I think that everyone, I think that the majority of committee feels that way as well. So I guess we'll just table this till the next committee meeting on September 16th. At 6:00 PM. So I, thank you so much, Ms. Owen. Is there any, are there any questions, Mrs. St. Orange? Do you have any questions for Ms. Owen relating to the finance update?
My question was just in, in relation to Ms. Marr's question. If, if we were to go ahead with this plan and four activity aids were hired, would that be taking the place of anything else? That, so I guess that goes along with seeing an itemized list of the, the grants. That's just on, curious about.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
I just have one more comment and I, I, I don't, I don't want to be a damp blanket on this, but we're in day one back to school and we don't know what other things might be coming at us in terms of requirements from the state as more and more districts open up and is there testing that needs to be done? Are there more protocols that need to be rolled out as everybody figures out how to go back to school? And to allocate all of our grant funding upfront and, and maybe not leave us any cushion, I think kind of puts us in a precarious situation and that's just kind of how I feel about it.
And one of our grants has to be, what's the word? Not spent, but encumbered isn't the word, but by December 31st, right?
Sue, isn't it both grants? The, I think, aren't there two grants that have to be encumbered by the end of?
Startup grants, correct?
Correct. They're startup grants.
And, and the money has to be encumbered?
Yeah, by the end of the year.
It has to be a lot, like allotted.
It's not, it's not encumbered. It's a.
It's like, it's designated.
Yeah, and we're working with the town in terms of the, the way, you know, is of their grant too, that we ordered a lot of PPE out of originally. So there's a, there's a fluidity to what we're doing with our grants as a town.
I don't, I don't know questions on the grants. You know, I've listed the revolving fund ending balances here.
The word was obligated, by the way. Obligated by December 31st. So they don't want you to save it, tuck it away for a rainy day. In other words, they want you to obligate it and make decisions on what you need up to December 31st. But of course, some of that might be, you know, we know we're going to need this moving forward as well. So it's just that we have to, they want us to be able to obligate it by then, if that makes sense.
Okay, there's a, a member of the community just asked a question. Laura Soderberg of 16 Black Horse Lane. She asks, can you please stipulate whether and how much of the $404,000 has already been spent or earmarked for implementing the plan as it stands today?
Well, none of it's been spent yet because we just applied for, or sent in our budget and approval on Friday. So we have not spent any of it yet. And what was the second part of the question? I'm sorry.
That was it.
Spent or earmarked for implementing the plan as it stands today?
Well, I think earmarked, if I might. Earmarked is different than spent, yeah.
So again, I, I don't have the, the numbers in front of me. I know we, we have earmarked it because they wanted, they wanted it written more specific than the other grant. So we did it, the Director of Technology and Digital Learning has been put there, a .5 nurse, four 15-hour-per-week custodians to help with the additional cleaning, two activity, part-time activity assistants to help with the recess and lunchroom. Some professional development's been allotted there. Quite a bit towards the PPE supplies, materials and/or the tents, the trailers for storage, anything like that. I'm trying to think what else is in there.
Instructional, TECA and instructional technology.
TECA. I keep forgetting TECA. So the, the tuitions for the children that are going to go for remote to TECA.
And then instructional technology too. Some of those, we needed to get some platforms.
That's right. I think Mrs. Soderberg asked, asked about the whole 400, so the 53,000 little cares money. You know, little C, I guess.
Has not been allotted to anything specific.
Just in much broader scope, which is where some of this could be used.
Correct.
So at some point, I think it's, it's probably useful, like, like Mrs. Mar was just calling for. I mean, we, we should probably put together that, that, I mean, you need to know where, and this is sort of what I was hoping we would have tonight. We need to know what has been earmarked, what portion of the grants have been earmarked. And I know that you just said that 53,000, nothing's been earmarked. But, you know, there are certain things like the Director of Educational Technology or Instructional Technology that we just voted for at the last meeting. I mean, that is something that, that, you know, that's an expenditure that, that has been, you know, a portion of the grant has been earmarked for. So there are some known features. I think that the question is, you know, well placed. I anticipated this issue, this issue, and I was hoping we would have that in more detail. So let's try and put that together as soon as possible. I mean, you know, now we're going to be, you know, in a situation where, you know, September 16th is the next meeting. And I, I don't know, you know, I don't know how we can get that information out sooner. We're waiting two weeks now for that. But I guess that's what we're going to have to do. So I know, Ms. Owen, is that something you think you can do is like put together a, a sort of itemized list of what we've sort of anticipated spending that money on?
Yes. I mean, when we submitted the budget for the grant, I mean, it has to be all itemized. So it's just a matter of getting a copy of the grant application, the budget page.
Okay.
We've itemized the $328,000 grant. So we have that.
I mean, so, so we had that application. Is that something that we have now? Is that public domain? I mean, what is the, what, I mean, is that, I mean, I mean, we're saying, let's put this together, but it sounds like we already have because we've already applied for the grant. So it sounds like we've already done this. So that document exists somewhere. Is that accurate?
The, the application, yes, exists somewhere. We're waiting for, just for approval back from DESI?
So it goes into a, so it goes into a workbook, a workbook for the state during, in the grant. So I think that's what Susan's talking about. So she's inputted all that into the workbook. And then she can take that and turn that into a spreadsheet and share that with you. Because that, that's the workbook that goes in for the grant. So
Yes.
Yep. She can, she can take care of that.
Okay, perfect. That's, that's, that's helpful and hopefully we can get that. We can sort of communicate that over to the, the community as well after that, that we have that spreadsheet in some manner. Just so people have an idea of where we're going with that. Because I understand, I understand Mr. Soderberg's question. So, all right. There's another question that came in. I'm not sure. So Mr. Christopher Allen, whose address has been noted in the record in connection with prior inquiries, asks, simply put, are the staff for the teachers' children in the large grant application?
No.
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 Okay.
Part of that's because of the due date of the application. I mean, we, you know, we're, we're trying to use all creative means to use the funding appropriately. But in that, in the large grant, no. Is it, could it be constituted within the $53,000 grant? Yes. Because we didn't have to be as definitive with that.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions from Ms. Owen on the finance update committee? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move on to the next agenda item, which is the School Committee Comments and Communication. We head first in the agenda in the, under the section of the attendance policy. But from my understanding, the, for scheduling purposes, or because of scheduling purposes, the subcommittee, the policies committee wasn't able to meet prior to this meeting. So Ms. Cleary and Mrs. St. Ange, is that correct that we don't have any proposed policy on this yet?
We did meet. We didn't feel like we had the ability to make decisions about this, this policy at that point. And so we've scheduled, as discussed, our next meeting for the 10th at 6:00 PM and plan to address this. And we will also address the mask policy at that meeting.
Okay. And so on September 16th, we'll be talking about both these things. Great. Okay, thank you. Any reports from the subcommittees or any reports from, by virtue of your liaison positions? Anyone? Mrs. Cleary? Mrs. Mar? Mrs. St. Ange? Okay, I don't have any report. Security is not present. So moving on. Approval minutes. I don't have any minutes in front of me that we need to approve at this point in time.
Nope, there'll be minutes next meeting, but not tonight.
Okay. Follow-up and updates. I think we've gotten all the updates that we're waiting for thus far. Topic's not reasonably anticipated by chairman within 48 hours of the meeting. There are none at this time. Lastly, we have executive session, which we do have a need to move into an executive session. We have to do so by a roll call vote. The, the purpose of the executive session for tonight's meeting in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 would be for strategy related to collective bargaining. And so I'd ask for a motion to move into executives. Oh, excuse me. Before we do that, Dr. Sullivan, I did promise someone, Mr. Belazas asked, he was wondering if there's a homecoming sport presentation being coordinated for the fall?
Yes, I just answered him.
Oh.
We, we do not have one planned at this point. I mean, we're, we're so fresh on the, the heels of just getting our kind of marching orders for what sports will look like. And I just mentioned that if we do have the ability to do that, and we'll communicate it. And we'll communicate exactly what it will look like if we are able to do it. So hold tight. We'll, we'll get information out as we are able to.
Thank you so much. Thanks for responding to that. I, I had forgotten.
No, no worries. I wasn't sure. We were moving quickly, so I, I answered him, but thank you for the question, Mr. Belaz.
Thank you. So is there a motion on the floor to move into, I'm sorry, Mrs. St. Ange, you have a question?
Just to clarify, will we be leaving this meeting and going to a separate Zoom meeting? Do we, will we be sent that link?
Yes, I will send you all the link and we can go to that. And do you want to leave this open? How do you want to do that, Greg?
We can, we can leave this open. And then we'll all have to log back into it just to adjourn unless there's any other outstanding issues, which there shouldn't be. I don't anticipate there are or there will be. So yeah, because just for privacy and confidentiality, we'd have to go and use like perhaps the leadership link or something like that in order to go into this different meeting. Because there's no way to ensure that this ordinarily, you know, or typically live public meeting wouldn't be accessible to someone else. So I think we have to do that. And then we have to adjourn.
I don't know that you can keep it open though. I think that it's going to close itself out because it's all the same Zoom license.
Yeah.
Our suggestion?
You can, you can close open meeting in, after, in your executive session. That's how we do it in a live meeting.
Okay.
How we did it last week.
Okay. I always thought that we adjourned the executive session, came back in a regular session and then made a motion and opened session to adjourn the school committee meeting. But if you're saying that we don't need to do that, then that's obviously simplifies the process. I mean, this is the last agenda item. There's nothing substantive discussed anyway. So after the executive session. So, all right. If Mrs. Mar, who was the former chair of the school committee, asserts that that is appropriate, then I'm certainly willing to follow that. So why don't we just do that? Then we'll go, Dr. Sullivan, could you share the leadership link? Not yet, because I have to still take the vote, the roll call vote for this, which I haven't been able to do yet. But can you send us the leadership link so that we can enter into executive session?
Done that right away.
Okay. So at this point, as I stated, the purpose of the executive session is for subsection A3 strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Is there a motion on the floor to enter into executive session for stated purpose number three?
All moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Mar, second.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cleary. All in favor, please indicate so in roll call fashion. Ashley Cleary?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Craig McClellan, aye. So that motion passes. We'll enter to executive session. Mrs. Mar, where this executive session relates to collective bargaining, I believe there is a conflict of interest for you. So I would suggest that you, you recuse yourself from that executive session.
So recused.
I don't think there's any need for you to come back into adjourn the meeting. We'll still have a quorum. So you get off, you get off quickly here.
Okay. All right. And Susan?
Have a nice night.
Susan and Barbara, I'll see you later. Okay. Good night and I'll see the rest of you. Mr. Allen, good night. I'll see the rest of you later and thank you everyone out there.